One of my hat, right?
Yeah.
That's what we're debating.
It is. So are you just gonna get off because you want to talk about it?
No.
Which is probably the rationale for learning first.
Oh.
Yes.
Oh.
That's the reason I thought of it.
Okay.
Okay, here we go. I think we've just got the thumbs up. Alyssa, are we thumbs up? Okay, let's call this a city council, Oakdale City Council regular meeting for December 8, 2020, starting a little bit early at 6:00 PM tonight to order. Sue, would you do roll call first? Chris, would you do roll call?
Okay, Mayor Ranke.
Here.
Councilmember Swedberg.
Here.
Councilmember Angerson. Spit it out.
Angerson.
I know, I know.
Angerson is present.
Councilmember Apple.
Here.
Councilmember Allison.
Here.
Please join me now in the collective legion. What allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all? In front of us tonight on our agenda, there's been a little bit of discussion about adding a new item, dealing with, under the new business category, dealing with the liquor fee rebate potential. If you so desire, if one, somebody makes a motion to add that as an agenda item of the new business.
I'll make motion to amend the agenda and add liquor license fee refunds under new business.
So there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Yes, I'd like some discussion.
Nice and low.
Um.
Please.
I think this is a great idea. I would like to put it off for maybe the week of, you know, the one that we're gonna do December 29th, only because I'd like staff to find out if other cities are doing it for more than just the bars and restaurant, the license fees. Because I don't want people to feel left out that they didn't get a break. I think this is a good idea, so I'm not opposed to it. I don't want you to think I'm against it because I'm not, but I think we might have to expand it more than what we're doing. Or I would like staff to find out if other cities are expanding it more than just the restaurants and the bars.
Thank you, counselors, thoughts?
Um, in my opinion, the worst thing any government can do is let the good be the enemy of the perfect. Nobody is saying this is perfect. I think we should absolutely have that conversation about additional businesses, but our local bars and restaurants are running against the element of time, which is why I think it's imperative that we have this agenda thing and approve it. So I'm going to, you know, disagree with you in saying putting this off. I think we can do it tonight and still have that conversation at our next meeting. I don't think we necessarily have to hold this one until we have that whole conversation.
Well, then, no, I, the reason I would disagree with that is because then it comes down to distribution of money. Because if we're using the list that came out with it and we're approving X amount of money, it, we might have to up them ante or decide that we split it more ways with other businesses like salons and massage therapists and stuff like that. So I'm just saying that, um, I would disagree. I vote no only for that reason, not because again, I'm against giving them money. I'm against that we didn't do our due diligence.
Colleen, these are good points. For this action, all we're doing, what I'd like to do is proceed with putting it on as the agenda item. If everybody agrees with that, then when we get to that point, I'd like you to express that same issue again. Neither will move forward or not based on that item. But if you're open to letting it be on the agenda of the new business, I'd like to proceed into that manner. So I think there was a motion and a second in the discussion. So, uh, which is noted, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes and the new agenda item is added to our meeting agenda tonight.
Come on, give us the second page.
Sue just hands out.
I don't know.
Right, the second page?
Yeah, I don't have my second page. Oh, she must have put it through.
Yeah. She just came out. No, it just includes page two, consent items. Stop chat. So tonight is our meeting being conducted in person as you can tell, but also by Zoom. And so anybody that is listening or watching on TV, please go to the website for directions about how to participate. There is an important hearing coming up shortly, and this is the truth and taxation public hearing on a chance to address the council and staff regarding budgets for the coming year, levy rates for coming year 21. And so it is important. This was advertised, it was updated. I want to be sure that people still have an opportunity tonight as we're talking to dial into the city website, find the instructions, go to the Zoom meeting, and we'll welcome Alyssa McCloud, who's managing as the host of the Zoom meeting tonight, will welcome you into the, into the meeting. So with that, I'm going to open up the public hearing for the truth and taxation meeting. And so I'm just gonna read a little bit because of the importance of this, this action. So welcome to the truth and taxation presentation. The purpose of this meeting is to, is for the city to present details of the final 2021 budget and levy prior to their adoption at tonight's regular city council meeting. For those who wish to make a public comment, please inform the meeting host. To do so on a computer or tablet, use the chat function to indicate that you would like to speak. If you are dialing in on the phone, please use the, please dial star nine. Again, please dial star nine if you're calling in on the phone. You will then be added to the public comment queue list. We'll start with comments that were submitted by a written statement and then call on residents or in the queue. Participants in the queue will be called in, in the order they were added to the list by either your participant name or the last four digits of your phone number. Public participants who do not respond within 10 seconds of their phone number or screen name being called will be skipped and the next person in line will be called on. This method will continue until all public participants have had the opportunity to comment. When called on, please begin by stating your name and address, and all participants will be allowed up to three minutes to comment. So thank you for participating in tonight's truth and taxation presentation. With that, I'm gonna call on Chelsea Peterson to, to begin the presentation. Chelsea, welcome tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Greetings from the far off land of upstairs in City Hall. We're giving this virtual meeting a try, so hopefully it works out for everybody. We're so well for everybody involved, so far so good. Um, so tonight, let me share my screen here. There we go. You guys can see the 2021 budget and property tax.
Yep.
Perfect, thank you. Um, so this is our truth and taxation hearing. This is kind of the culmination of many, many months of work by city council, department heads, staff at all levels. So there's been a lot, a lot of great participation throughout this process and all the, all the participation and assistance is very much appreciated. There we go. So to start off, we have a little bit of a history of our property tax levy. As you can see, it's been ever so slightly increasing every year. If we go back over the last five years, it's been increasing on average about 5% every year. We do have some years where it's down closer to two or 3%, and there's been a year where it was a little bit closer to 8%. So we have, we have a slow and steady growth in our property tax levy. Um, our property tax base has also been increasing slightly. So the tax base is based off of the property valuations, which is done by the city, excuse me, the county assessor's office. So it's, it's a reflection of property values that are increasing as well as the growth and development in the community by homeowners, developers, business owners, things like that. We do have a levy per capita comparison of communities in Washington County. I will note that this is based on preliminary levy numbers. As you know, we set our preliminary levy in the month of September, and then we are able to maintain that levy if we so choose by the end of December and/or we can reduce it here in Oakdale. We do plan to reduce it, or that is the proposal in front of you this evening. Um, so other cities may or may not be doing the same. So to keep it on an even playing field, we did base this off of preliminary levy. So if we were to have kept a preliminary levy rate, we're at $482 per capita, which as you can see is one of the lower in Washington County. Um, so when people do get their property tax notices, they tend to just look right down at the dollar at the very bottom. So we just want to break it down a little bit. So when you do get your property tax notice, 40 cents of that does go to the school, 32% or 32 cents of every dollar does come to the city, 23 cents to the county. And then the remaining six cents is split between Met Council and other taxing jurisdictions, mosquito district, watersheds, things like that. So we do not get all of the money that people do see on their property tax statement. So of that, excuse me, 32%, here is how it is broken down once the city of Oakdale gets it. So public safety makes up our largest budget area. It's, it's one of our largest departments, our police department, fire department. And then our building, building inspections department is also considered public safety because it goes to the overall life and property safety in the community. Right behind that, you have the administration. And that's our general government services, mainly folks here at City Hall. We have the finance, administration, customer service, communications, IT, community development. Those are kind of the biggest ones. Additionally, you'll see our debt service there at 20%. That is long-term infrastructure investment in the community, making sure that the roads are in good condition outside of presidential properties, large-scale equipment purchases like power trucks and fire trucks falling in there. And then our public works makes up the rest. So that is the folks that maintain all of that infrastructure and run the power trucks and the maintain the parks, trails, all those systems for the rest of us. So then we did a little bit of a breakdown here. There's $150,000 market value home. They see an overall property tax statement of $1,200 and of that 488 goes to the city. And then you can see both the annual and monthly breakdown. So they've paid $15, $15.82 towards our overall public safety budget on a monthly basis. And so on. And then we also have a $250,000 market home broken down as well. They get a $2,300 property tax statement of that, 910 goes to the city. And again, you can see they spend 27, or excuse me, 2947 monthly towards our public safety costs, 1694 towards our administration, 1527 towards long-term infrastructure health for our community, and 1422 towards the public work services. Here are four properties throughout the community. These are the same four that we try to do every single year, so you can see consistent trends. So here is the first property in 2020, it's valued at $304,700. 2021, excuse me, skipping ahead already to 2022, you can see that there's an overall property value increase of $27,000. And then you can see the total tax that they pay and then the city portions of those. So overall, from 20 to 21, the city portion is increasing by $152. Under our preliminary levy, $48.91 of that is due to the actual city levy rate. The rest of it is due to the increase in property value. So that breaks down to $4.08 on a monthly basis. And that that home will pay, again, based on the preliminary levy numbers, which the proposal is to come in under the preliminary levy. So again, on the second property, we have a, we have a nice sampling here. We've got anywhere between a $371,000 home and a $209,000 home. So on the property number two, their property value is increasing to 264,000, which is an increase of 4,300. And you can see that they're paying $3.23 monthly due to the city's imposed levy rate increase. Property number three, that's a $371,000 value in 2021. That's a $3,700 value increase, overall increase due to the city portion is $68. And then monthly it breaks down to $4.51 due to, again, the city raising our portion of the property tax levy. Um, property four, they're also seeing a little bit greater increase in those two properties in the middle. So overall, $60, or $68, their city portion is going up. And because the city tax rate is going up, they're gonna see a $2.46 broke it down to monthly. Uh, here's a little bit of a breakdown of our general fund. As you can see, property taxes do make up 68% of our general fund. That is where we do get the most of our revenues to be able to fund our city operations. Next biggest breakdown is the miscellaneous in charge of first service categories. Those include interest on our investments, transfers out from our utility funds to support their use of general fund resources. That includes both city facilities and city staff. Like we do have two staff in the, in the finance division that process all the utility bills. So there's a transfer from the utility bu- funds to help offset those cap staff costs. Also in there are franchise fees from gas and electric utilities that occupy your city railway and our antenna rental. Uh, next largest is our intergovernmental and then license, excuse me, licenses and permits. So that's any funds we get from other governmental entities in the form of local government aid, street funding from the state, sometimes we get state or federal grants, and then business licensing and building permits. So then our expenditures, the biggest thing we spend money on is the people that are here serving the city of Oakdale. So 75% is our personnel, that is overall wages, benefits. Those are the two biggest ones, sir. And then again, as you saw, previous, or you'll see a little next slide, I guess. Our public safety and, and public work crews are the largest group of employees that we do have. Uh, second biggest is materials and supplies. Those are what we need to be able to carry out the service to the public. So it's the computers and copiers that help kind of process the newsletter that we send out to residents, the road salt that goes down, any time you have a snow event, tools to repair, you know, playground equipment when you have swing broken, equipment and uniforms for public safety personnel. And any other tools we need to be able to complete our work. Uh, and then contractual services is 6% of our overall expenditures. Generally, we try to complete as much in-house as possible, but there are times that we do need to contract out for large-scale projects. Additionally, there are things that we do routinely seek outside assistance for. Financial advising is one of them. Legal services, legal compliance review is another one. IT from Metro INET is a big one. And then our auditors ensuring that we are in compliance with everything we need to be compliant with. So that is our general fund expenditures. Uh, and then we break it down by department here a little bit. So some of those blues are a little hard to differentiate, so I do apologize for that. As you can see, these two right here, lease and fire, do make up almost half of our general fund budget. So public safety is, is the bulk of our, the bulk of our staff costs and the bulk of our staff, frankly. And then public works is almost 25% of it. So between those three groups, that is the majority of our employees. Uh, and then right behind them, we have administration, that's customer service, licensing, finance, human resources, IT, communications. Um, and then the other departments get a little bit smaller beyond that. That is the bulk of the presentation. There are several property tax relief programs that are offered. We, we just list names there. The Department of Revenue has a very great breakdown on that, or we are happy to provide that to residents if they ask as well. So at this time, I don't believe that we have received any written or verbal comments. I would look to those in the council chambers to see if there is anyone present here, nor Alyssa, if anybody has joined us via Zoom. I have not received any comments, and I don't believe that Sue has either. So I would stand for questions if the council has any. And if not, I would ask that we open up to the public comment period.
Thank you, Chelsea. And as a, just a point of clarification for the people who are watching on Zoom, possibly for the first time, I introduced Chelsea Peterson, and I did not give her title. Chelsea is the administrative, administrative services director, primarily responsible for the finance and HR and administration within the city hall. So thank you, Chelsea, for that presentation. I'll just take a moment in case there is somebody that is watching on Zoom or is trying to get in still. And while we're waiting, counselors, do you have any questions for Chelsea? So Jim, I think I have to open up the public hearing officially, right?
This is, Mr. Mayor, it's not technically a public hearing, certainly it's not. I don't think it's a public meeting, but call the hearing, so it's probably best.
So I'll go through, go through the formal motions about opening up this meeting now for public comments or any comments from the audience, including our, our friends that might be watching on Zoom or through YouTube. So is there anybody that would like to comment about this presentation dealing with our general fund budget? So there are no online comments, and we have received no written comments either.
And no phone calls.
And no phone calls of recent. With that, I'm gonna close this portion of the public hearing then of the public meeting, and I'll bring it back up front for our comments. Counselors, any comments or questions? One comment that I want to make is just a re- reinforcement to what Chelsea had mentioned is the amount of time that has gone by since we started working on this. My recollection is in April this year, we started working on this budget. I think Chelsea and Chris and department heads were working on it prior to that. So then every, every month, we'd either get an update, we'd ask questions, or we'd dive deep into the gritty details of what makes up certain categories. So after all that work, we've come to tonight believing that the budget that is in front of us is sensible, is good for the city, will help the city move to achieve the goals that we've outlined for the community. With that said, can I have a motion that please?
Are we just jumping right into the?
I'm gonna take them one at a time.
Okay.
So the first one is just the general fund budget, please.
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt resolution number 2020, adopting the 2021 general fund budget.
So there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second. There's a motion and a second, is there any conversation? Anybody say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes as presented, thank you. Chelsea, will you take us to the next one, which is the 2021 property tax levy? And Director Peterson, while you're looking there, I know we have Commissioner Karowski joining us by Zoom. And Stan, we had targeted you for 6:30 tonight. We're taking a little bit longer to work through, just make sure that everybody understands this, this presentation. Are you able to hold with us, or do you have another commitment?
Um, oh, something happened on my picture. Um, I can hold at seven, I have another commitment. But I joined early just as a citizen to watch the truth and taxation. So that's why I'm early, but if I can get it done before seven, that would be nice.
Very good, I think you'll be able to.
Thank you.
Okay, so, thank you. Chelsea, we're back with you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Here is a breakdown of our 2021 proposed tax levy. Initially in September, when we had set the levy, we had set it at a tax rate increase of 3.9% through additional hard work by all of the department heads and city council as well. We've been able to reduce that to a 2.9% overall tax rate increase. So you can see the breakdown here. The property tax revenue that would go directly into the general fund under the current proposal is $9.7 million. And then we do have other sources of revenue as well. We just covered some of those licenses, permits, inter, intergovernmental payments and things like that, make up that $4.5 million. And then we also have several designated budgets, which are essentially a transfer once we get our overall property tax levy revenue. So we have $200,000 going into the CIP fund. That is, helps fund our street projects. $100,000 goes into the park CIP fund for park-related projects. $55,000 goes directly into the economic development. And then is split between two of our economic development-related funds. Excuse me, the public building fund, as you know, we're, we're trying to plan for our lease and public works facilities in the long term. So we are continuing to build up that fund so that we are ready to go if and when we can secure additional funding. And then we have $300,000 that we use for public safety related to our ambulance service. We also have our debt service funds. Again, those are the, they're, they're paying back our long-term infrastructure projects, road projects, things like that, as well as large-scale equipment purchases. So those are payments that we need to make with the assistance of tax revenues. And then if you look way at the bottom there, you can see the breakdown. So we are looking at a 2021 final proposed property tax levy of $13,532,996, which would result in a 2.9% overall tax rate increase for the city of Oakdale.
Anything further, Chelsea?
Uh, nope, again, I would stand for questions if there are any. And again, just reiterate, this has been a very long work or a very long project with a lot of work from a lot of different people, city council members, city staff, and city administrator Volkers came in kind of right in the middle of all of it. So she certainly learned a lot about Oakdale in a hurry and just appreciate everybody's help to get us to this point.
Thank you very much. Counselors, any questions for Chelsea? Then I'm gonna open it up to the public for public comment. Jim, you're looking stern at me, is there something that I did wrong?
I actually think the public, we held it all three at the same time, you really don't need to do it again.
Okay.
The truth and taxation on all these components.
Even though people didn't really understand the other two components.
Doesn't matter.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask, and just go through the motions, and hopefully somebody will ask a question. So if there's somebody out there watching by Zoom or on cable or, or YouTube, please comment and ask the question.
We do not have anyone ask any comments.
So I'm gonna close the public comment portion of the meeting, bring it back to the council for comments. Counselors, any comments? Um, my only comment is the pleasure, I guess is a better word for it. But when we set this thing at 3.9% a levy increase over last year, everybody took a hard swallow. That's a, that's a lot of money in a, in a percentage increase that was significant. The work that was done to get it down 1% to a final levy tonight of 2.9% increase is significant and appreciated for our cause as far as leaders of the city, but also and appreciated for our cause as far as leaders of the city, but also, um, across the board to all the residents and business owners to, uh, we're going to be paying this tax. So with that said, can I have a motion then, please?
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt resolution number twenty twenty, certifying the noted sums of money levied in twenty twenty for collection in twenty twenty-one upon the taxable property within the city of Oakdale.
So there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any further conversation? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes as presented, thank you. We have the third portion of the overall twenty twenty-one budget levy adoption presentation. This is the twenty twenty-one capital fund, enterprise fund, and special revenue operating budgets. Ms. Peterson, take her away.
Yes, Mayor, and, uh, my apologies, I don't have a, a slider, a visual on this one. The, all of these funds have been included in our city council package, and we, we have gone over those. Typically, they are not, um, tax-supported, so we're focusing a little bit more on the levy. So again, my apologies, I didn't prepare anything visually for them, uh, but we do have line item budgets on those in the city council package. The only thing that I will note is that the enterprise funds, um, the water sewer, um, and I believe we're doing that later in the regular council meeting. The, um, proposed fee increases, we conducted a large-scale, uh, utility rate study this year, um, to make sure that our, um, enterprise funds were sufficiently supporting themselves, and they were supporting the operations, um, that it does, you know, that the city undertakes to be able to serve the community with, uh, water, and then the sewer collections in order to get it on over to Met Council, as well as the, um, stormwater fund and the streetlight utilities as well. So that'll be before you later in the, um, fee portion of the consent agenda, I believe. So I have to stand for questions here as well.
Very good, thank you, Chelsea. Councilors, any questions for Ms. Peterson? Very good, uh, I'll open it up to the, uh, public for any public comment, any Zoom comment, phone comments, anybody else that might want to? Okay, I'm going to bring it back up front and close that portion of the public hearing, and entertain any final comments from the, uh, council. Can I have a motion then, please?
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt resolution twenty twenty, adopting the twenty twenty-one capital fund, enterprise fund, and special revenue operating budgets.
So there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any further conversation? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, then that motion passes as presented, thank you. And thank you very broadly to the department heads, the managers leading this, um, this enterprise of all the various departments. Chelsea Peterson, of course, your staff, Chelsea up in the finance group. Chris, thank you very much for all the effort and the hours spent, and, um, it's well done, so. Next up on our agenda then is the approval of minutes, we have two of them in front of us. Oh, yeah, yeah, let's do that, um, Commissioner Karowski.
There it is, I don't even have to hold the plaque up.
Yeah.
Mayor, would you like me to kick it off with some words about the plaque?
Yes, please.
Hey, uh, before I do that, I, I gotta thank you and the city council and staff as a resident of Oakdale for thirty-three years. I appreciate the effort and the discipline and, and what we have for quality of life here in Oakdale, and I just have to compliment you that as a citizen.
Thank you.
Um, so anyhow, uh, yes, uh, this, uh, it's my honor today to attend your council meeting and present to you this plaque commemor- commemorating the ribbon-cutting of the radio drive Inwood Avenue pedestrian bridge over I ninety-four. If the residents haven't seen it, it's a significant overpass bridge, very wide for biking, uh, pedestrian, a lot of room for everyone, planters, and seating, and it was necessitated by a lane expansion that was much needed on radio and Inwood Drive. So as you know, uh, back on October eighth, we did hold a ribbon-cutting. Mayor Ranky was there, myself, Commissioner White, we also had State Senator Susan Kent and Congresswoman Betty McCollum, and along with staff, uh, from both cities and, uh, our county staff, uh, to, we, to have a ribbon-cutting to celebrate the opening of the bridge, which makes, uh, residents easier in both Oakdale and Woodbury to take full advantage of the outdoor recreation, walking, biking, and using wheelchairs even to get around. Uh, our survey in the county we take really had put a lot of value on trails and bridges, so we're happy to accommodate that. Today I bring you this plaque to sub- celebrate the partnership between our agencies that made this project possible. Uh, this, this project came together, uh, really years ago, while Ted Berth, uh, was the county commissioner representing Oakdale. He kind of spearheaded it, and then, uh, since then, through collaboration of the Minnesota Department of Transportation, City of Woodbury, Oakdale, and our federal partners, including the federal highway administration, the Met Council, and Washington County, all contributing and working together. Uh, this recreational pedestrian trail linking our two cities is now accessible to all residents and is designed for two-way traffic, which is so important, uh, in this, uh, day and age. Uh, it crosses a major interstate freeway, ninety-four, uh, and, and so often a major freeway is a barrier between two cities or neighborhoods. Uh, thank you to the entire city council for your support on this project. Um, I'm proud that, uh, we as a county are able to promote strong partnerships, which result in such valued project. Uh, look forward to working with the city on many more upcoming projects, including a few bridge projects.
Very good, thank you, Commissioner Karowski. And, um, so the plaque, uh, just made its way up on the dais here, I think, um, as well as you have it now, and it will get displayed someplace, uh, prominent in the, in the city hall.
Yep, really good, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Councilors, anything, uh, for Stan, as long as we have him? Okay, Stan, thank you very much.
Okay, signing off.
Yeah.
Thank you again.
Yeah, thank you.
On our agenda next then is the approval of minutes, we have two of them in front of us. One is from the workshop on October thirteenth, and one is from the regular meeting November twenty-four. Dealing with that workshop, leaving minutes from October thirteenth of the Oakdale City Council. Upon review, did any councilor have any question or comments? Grab a motion then, please?
Some of them.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any conversation? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And then meeting minutes are approved as presented. Next one deals with the regular meeting of the Oakdale City Council on November twenty-four, twenty twenty. Upon review, did any councilor have any questions or clarifications? Grab a motion then, please?
Some of them.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is a motion and a second, is there any conversation? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? As many minutes are approved as presented, thank you. Next on the agenda is time for open forum. This is a chance for people who are also on Zoom right now, or watching on, um, YouTube, or calling in, have a chance to make comment if they'd like to. While that might be happening, or while people are deciding to dial in or call in, uh, there's two things that, uh, there's one thing that I want to talk about, and this is the Volunteer of the Year announcement, and, uh, we were very, very happy to be able to announce that Larry Everhard was the Volunteer of the Year twenty twenty at this most recent Oakdale Area Chamber of Commerce meeting. Larry was not able to be there, and, and kind of, uh, how Larry is, he's a workaholic. He takes his service to his clients with such importance and high, high desire to do better than they can even imagine, that, um, he got a call. So he couldn't attend that, uh, that meeting, but nonetheless, I was very happy to be able to read the write-up that we had for him. And then the picture that's on the screen right now is, um, just me being able to shake his hand and congratulate him in person. Let me read just a little bit, uh, from what I read at the chamber meeting. So Larry Everhard has been named as Oakdale's Outstanding Volunteer for twenty twenty. He was selected for the many ways he serves the community, and here are a few highlights. He's a longtime member of the Oakdale Chamber of Commerce, including serving on the Chamber's Helping Hands program team. He has served on the city's Economic Development Commission. He sponsors an annual free document shredding event each spring. He lets, he leads the charge with collecting crayons, facial tissue, hand sanitizer, which are all donated to local elementary schools. As a, a very pleasurable thing for the staff, he and his staff provides bagels to our Oakdale city staff each year on nine eleven as a commemoration event. Also, as a fun one, he drove the Easter Bunny through the city just this past April. So Larry, on behalf of the city, thank you for being such a remarkable example and making Oakdale an even better place to live, work, and play. So that's terrific, thank you, Larry. Uh, Alyssa, did anybody, um, respond as far as trying to make comment? We'll look forward to the consensus motions, we have in front of us quite a few of them. A through, another thing? How many of them?
K.
A through K. So, uh, councilors, do you want to pull any of these, um, consensus motions for further discussion?
I would like to pull item D.
D, anybody else? Okay, can I have a motion then, approving consensus motions A through C and E through K?
I'll make a motion to approve consensus motions A through C and E through K as presented.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any conversation? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, then that motion passes as presented. Councilmember Ingberdson, share some of your thinking about item D.
Well, just, no conversation, just, uh, wanted to pull it for separate vote.
Very good, uh, can I have a motion then on approving D?
I'll make a motion to approve consensus motion D as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any conversation? My piece of conversation is just to acknowledge to the people who might be watching that this motion deals with the, um, code ordinance amendment, dealing with the subdivision, and it's, um, modifying it such that, um, we are going to be asking the, um, landowner, when there is an approved small area plan, that landowner document the future split and how the land is going to be divided at the time of a sale of property. I think that was pretty good.
Yeah.
Okay, so, councilmember, share your thoughts.
I just, I, I think we're pigeonholing ourselves by passing this, and, you know, I, I, I never want to find the council on a spot where we lose flexibility, so.
Anybody else have comments? Thank you very much, so, uh, there's a motion, there's a second, um, we've got some comments, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
And then motion passes as presented, thank you. And, uh, Chris, I believe you said that new business was going to go just before the council presentation, or is it going to go after the old business?
It was going to go after administrator report, at the very end.
Yep, right.
So for old business, uh, we have the twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-five capital improvement program, and, um, who's going to take that, Chris? Is that going to be Brian, is he going to be able to? Join?
Brian is on the phone, there you go, Brian, would you like to speak to that?
Sure. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, and members of the council. Um, over the past several months, we've been working with you on the capital improvement program, kind of reviewing all the projects that are listed in the seven different categories, uh, within the report. Uh, we've spent a lot of time and effort reconciling the revenue projections with the expenditures, and, uh, the report is completed in before you this evening. As you know, the policy objectives contained within the capital improvement program is really to identify and anticipate the major capital improvements in our communities so that we can properly budget over a number of years and prepare for those. Uh, also to develop a realistic list of needs for our community, do things in compliance with our comprehensive plan, and provide an opportunity for coordination, uh, with other agencies and, uh, with our own improvements to make sure that they are done in a fiscally responsible manner. Before you, tonight is, uh, we're asking for three actions from the council. Number one is to approve the fiscal policy plan that's reflected in the capital improvement program. Uh, I believe this year we only had two changes. One, uh, was in regards to the financing of the streetlight improvements coming out of the streetlight utility, and then adjusting the special assessments, uh, for our annual program. Uh, we're all, uh, also asking the council to adopt, uh, the capital improvement program from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-five, and then to initiate the seven projects that are listed as projects for twenty twenty-one. That will allow us an opportunity to properly prepare for the plans and, uh, get them to bid this spring for construction next summer. With that, I'd stand for any questions the council may have.
Thank you, Brian, and for people watching and moving on Zoom again, uh, Brian Bachmeyer is our city engineer and director of public works. So councilors, any questions for Brian? Very good. The one comment that I wanted to, uh, to make here within here, is just a listing of a couple of things that will happen with, uh, within this twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-five, uh, CIP. It's the relocation, re- and rehabilitation of the lift station at Stillwater Boulevard and at Deal Avenue. It's the rehabilitation of the lift station number eleven up in North Dale Park. It's the, um, regular activated charcoal treatment plant at well number seven. It's the Oakdale Park Trail repaving of the south loop. It's the re-roofing of Walton, uh, Walton Park shelters, three of them. It's the Walton Shelter Kitchen Remodeling Program, or a project, and also replacing the Oakdale, uh, Park signs. Uh, those are just some of the many things that are outlined throughout the capital improvement program. So, can I have a motion then, please?
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt resolution number twenty twenty, adopting the fiscal policy reflected in the twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-five capital improvement program, adopting the twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-five capital improvement program, and initiating the twenty twenty-one projects as noticed, as noted above, as well as the respective timetable and funding requirements.
So there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any conversation? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, then that motion passes as presented, thank you. Next on the agenda is time with our Public Works Director, City Engineer, Mr. Bachmeyer again, this is dealing with a city project, Brian?
Thank you, uh, the one item I have listed tonight is the feasibility report for the twenty twenty-one street improvement program. And if Alyssa can help me, uh, share my screen for that presentation. Can I get a confirmation, got it?
Yep.
Okay, so, uh, the neighborhoods that we have identified for twenty twenty-one include, uh, Helena, uh, the Shenandoah Valley neighborhood, which is north of Fiftieth Street, east of six ninety-four, and south of Gateway Trail. It's a single-family residential neighborhood that was, uh, developed in the early nineteen nineties. And the other, uh, neighborhood is, uh, either side of six ninety-four, north of Fourth Street, uh, east of Hadley Avenue and west of Helmo Avenue. Uh, it's three different, uh, business areas, uh, with streets that provide access to the commercial properties, uh, in this area. Really, the objective of our annual program is threefold, uh, one to maintain and improve safety, uh, through pavement conditions and street lighting. Also, it's to control maintenance costs, these are neighborhoods that have the very poor pavement conditions and, um, cost to maintain them are increasing at an increasing rate, and it's very inefficient to continue attaching them. And then the third objective is to eliminate service barriers that happen when, uh, streets get older, and the pavement becomes brittle, and we have to start restricting, uh, the load limits in the spring of the year, which can interfere with access to your property. can interfere with access to your property for services. Now, this is, this map just gives you an idea where you can see we spend our maintenance dollars every year in the neighborhoods that we've identified for 2021 are the areas where we have a high density and a extensive amount of patching in those areas, contiguous areas. So it is appropriate to kind of focus on those. You can see other neighborhoods are also where we're doing maintenance and you'll see in our program that we have those identified for future years. The other thing I mentioned is our load limits. As our streets get older and brittle, we do have to start restricting the load limits in the spring of the year and Shenandoah Valley now is limited to five ton. The business areas, it becomes extremely difficult to limit that because obviously they're in the business and dealing with a lot of truck traffic. So it's very difficult to restrict the spring axle loads in those areas. And as a result, we have to do more maintenance to maintain those roadways. This is our five-year program, and so you can see the neighborhoods that we've identified for 2021 are in red. And then the other neighborhoods for future years, 2022, 23, 24, and 25 are throughout the community. And again, they're pretty much following the pattern of where we're spending more and more of our maintenance dollar. The proposed improvements included in next year's program include pavement rehabilitation between the curb and gutter. There's also a number of trail improvements in these areas. I'll show those on the map shortly, but up in the Shenandoah Valley, we have a trail that has poor pavement conditions and it does periodically get flooded when the wetlands and the finding areas on either side raised to a certain level. So we see an opportunity to raise that. So we improved the access to the Gateway Trail. Also down in the business area, along Hayward Avenue, we have trails that the current alignment is not conducive or in compliance with ADA. And so this is an opportunity to do a different alignment to improve that and also to avoid a small wooden bridge that's in poor repair, having to replace that. By doing a realignment, you don't need to replace that bridge. And then the third is according to our comprehensive plan, there's a need for a trailer or sidewalk along Helena Avenue, which is in the vicinity of Sergeant Pepper's and the hotel and the bank up to 10th Street. And so it's a continuation of that trail that extends to the south. So we're looking at including those trail improvements as part of this project. While we're doing these surface improvements, we're also doing investigations on the underground utility sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and water main to determine if there's any repairs that are needed. At this point, we have not identified any significant repairs, but we're currently televising a lot of those on the ground utilities. Also, as a part of our project, we're proposing to upgrade and replace the street lighting system. The Shenandoah Valley streetlights up there are the kind of the old standard, 30-foot tall steel tapered poles. Our new standard is a decorative 13-foot-high residential scale poles with LED light fixtures. So we're looking at replacing those. And then down in the commercial industrial area, we will be upgrading those to the decorative industrial lighting standard with the LED fixture. We're also evaluating the street signs and doing replacements where necessary, and we've notified the private utilities, including gas, electric, and phone for any opportunity to coordinate with our improvements if they have any replacement needs in those areas. This is just to give you a sense of the pavement condition. We just have some pictures. This is Heath Avenue, again, north of 50th Street. Here's Helena, north of 50th. You can see the extensive patching that we've done. And you can different, see the different shades of patching, which means we've come back year after year to do patching. So it's not a one and done thing. It's a reoccurring obligation once we get pavement in this condition. And just more examples of the the extent of maintenance that's having to be done in these areas. So it is pretty consistent and pretty extensive. This is just some examples of the commercial areas. You can see Sergeant Pepper's and Best Western and the pavement conditions and the amount of patching that we're now having to do down in this area. And this is Hayward Avenue. And this is the business district north of 4th, just east of Hadley Avenue, Yale Avenue. So again, this is the Shenandoah Valley area. You can see the pavement areas that will be resurfacing. And then here's that trail connection I was referring to that goes up to the Gateway Trail right between these two pining areas. We'll get anywhere from six inches to a foot of water. That'll be on there for, you know, a couple of weeks before it draws down. And so we have an opportunity to raise that, you know, a couple of feet through here and avoid that trail being overtop. And then down on the, in the south area, I mentioned 4th Street and Helmo Avenue and north is to the the right of this exhibit. So you can see Hayward Avenue that goes through the business area. We have an existing trail system that goes through Powerline Park up to Helmo Avenue and then up to Hayward and then continues down to 4th Street. And currently the trail runs through this alignment, comes through a cul-de-sac in this townhome association and then goes down over an old small wooden bridge that's, that's heaved and needs to be replaced before it gets out to 4th Street. And the grades through here are not ADA compliant. We have an opportunity to realign the trail through this area and make a connection out to 4th Street. And with the gold line BRT, there will be a trail continuation along here. So that will be connected and part of that trail system within the next two years. So an opportunity to do that. Again, the pavement conditions through this area are such that the trail needs to be resurfaced. North of Hayward Avenue from here up to 9th Street, the pavement conditions are actually suitable to go another 10 years. So we are not proposing to resurface this trail through here with this project. And then on the very north end, again, this would be the Sergeant Pepper's and the Best Western Hotel. Kind of the top of the screen here, and you can see we have an area here that our comprehensive plan indicates the need for this trail to continue up to 10th Street. And so with this project, we would look at either doing a sidewalk or a trail. We're determining if they're suitable right away and what impacts would be to try to fit a trail versus a sidewalk through this area. But so that'll be part of the design process. We did have a virtual presentation due to COVID on November 4th that was made available to the neighbors to review instead of our typical annual neighborhood meeting. Follow up from that, I think I've had two or three calls. Other than that, I have not heard from any of the affected property owners. We're presenting the report tonight. And if the council is comfortable with what's contained within the report, we're asking that the public hearings be scheduled for January 26th of 2021, next month. If the public hearings go well, council then will be asking for council approval of the plans in March, award in April, start construction in May and have everything substantially complete by the end of August. The financing for the project, a combination of special assessments for the benefiting properties and then a series of local funding sources from our Stormwater Utility, utility reserve, streetlight utility, capital improvement funds and general obligation bonds. Total project is 3.6 million. I think the assessments are represent about 40% and the city share of the project is around 60%, which is very similar to past projects over the year. This map just kind of gives you a sense of what the special assessments are. In the single-family neighborhood, it looks like the assessments range from around 3,200 up to 4,000 based on frontage. There is some varying frontage in there. So we, we had to calculate the frontage for each lot. And then in the commercial industrial area, again, a lot of varying lot widths and some corner lots. So there's frontage on two streets. So the assessments in the commercial industrial area range from 2,000 for some of the condominium units that exist in this area up to almost $99,000 for one commercial industrial property. I believe that's this one right here. It does have double frontage and they do have driveways on, on both streets. So the assessments are significant. But they do represent, I think, less than 5% of the property value, not the total improvement. So it doesn't include the building, just the property value itself. So the assessments are less than the four to 5% that we typically see. Now, the council action requested tonight is to accept the feasibility report and then to authorize a preparation of plans and call for the public improvement hearing on January 26th. With that, I'd stand for any questions the council may have.
Thank you, Brian. Counselors, any questions for Brian? No questions? Maybe one just a clarification, Brian, if you would. If the total project cost is like that 3.67 million, 40% that gets assessed or the amount that gets assessed is about 40% of that. And then the remainder goes 50% from the general fund and various special funds. So only 40% per our policy and per our ordinance, only 40% gets charged, assessed to the actual benefiting property.
That is correct.
And then the key date again for the improvement and assessment hearing is coming up on January 26th, 2021.
That is correct. And we will be getting the notices out, the invitations for the property owners the first week of January. And they will have a similar opportunity like tonight where they will be able to do it via Zoom or in person if they so choose.
Very good. Counselors, can I have a motion then please?
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt resolution 2020, accepting the feasibility report for city project 2021 oh one, the 2021 Street Improvement Program, authorizing the preparation of plans and specifications and calling for the improvement and assessment hearings on January 26th, 2021.
Thank you. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion on the second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes as presented. Next on our agenda is time with our community development director, Mr. Streeter. Good evening.
Well, tonight I'd just like to provide a update of a number of projects that is, that are going on in the city. If I miss anything or you want me to update on, you want something that's not here, just let me know and I can add it. So let me just start with the Gold Line project itself. It's real simple. They're at 60% as the mayor said earlier, designed. Soon they'll be at 90. They'll start construction in the first quarter of 2022 and that'll occur and then it'll be open and running in the first quarter of 2024. With regard to Helmo Station, I've mentioned in the past, we have two multi-family developers that are interested. We've been working with them for a little bit. What they've provided so far would be in substantial conformity with the council-approved plans. I know I've been speaking with the administrator, Chris, and we're going to offer to meet individually with the council members to walk through this in detail and then attend a general work session with the council on the same items. So you'll get a chance to really get deep, deep in the details on this project. Both of those projects, Presbyterian Homes in Bethesda, want to begin construction in 2021. I've worked with Presbyterian Homes in the past in other cities. They're a really outstanding operation. So the third item I'd like to mention is Greenway Station. That's their, it's at Greenway and Hudson. There is a vacant parcel. It's two, over 2.25 acres. It's now for sale. We were contracted by the broker. They had read the council's small area plan and said, hey, you've got that guided and zone or, you know, not guided and zone, but planned for multi-family. We'd like to entertain that. So if you know anybody who's interested in doing multi-family there, please direct them our way. So that's what we are doing. That's what, that's what we have been doing for the last 10 days. The fourth item is in January, Willow Brook is going to be submitting their second addition, Platte Edition. And they're going to be final plating outlot A and B. And those are the outlots that will have the village, they're the villa and carriage townhome. And they're going to be in construction and heavy-duty grading next year. So that's exciting. With regard to Willow Brook, I was notified today by Lennar that they are going to have their comments and people with developments comments back to us this week. And I've been talking and working with our city attorney, Jim Thompson, on that. What we want to be able to do is get that agreement out to you folks in December and maybe take some action near the end of January, beginning of February. Number five, I mentioned in the past that Priority Couriers has purchased the Schreier property that's right next to Park Tool. They plan on moving their headquarters there, their whole operation. So we've been working with them running property tax calculations and kind of directing them, helping them work with the watershed. Number six, Tanner's Lake. Thursday, staff will be meeting the water and that's Slumberland. They have different Indian, even the architects to master plan the remaining 65 acres of their campus. So that will be something they want to move fairly quickly on and then come back to the council and there'll be more discussion. Two other items, eight, the animal emergency pet clinic. The, they plan on constructing a three-story clinic, expands their current location. That will come to the council on November 12th. Did I say November?
Yeah.
Time flies when you're happy. Okay. The last item is home furniture would like to move from their current place and vary to occupy the theater site. They want to repurpose that site. They are going to be requesting or have submitted an application to amend the zoning ordinance to significantly reduce the parking. The, the parking may work for their use. The way they've explained it so far is a lot of folks, they don't have the same level of people coming in and out of the building. So they want to significantly reduce the parking. And then that would allow them, if they wanted to, to develop the balance of the parking lot into another use. The challenge there is if that would occur and the home furniture were to leave, any subsequent retail user is not going to be able to, that parking ratio is too low for them to work. And you could potentially strand the building. It would be functionally obsolete and very challenging to get another set of retail users in there. So that they've submitted a request to amend the ordinance. And I think the way Emily and I talked about it is there would be a work session potentially on January 12th, if we can work that out. We go to the planning commission, we come to a council work session either on the 12th or the 26th. And then the council would take final action sometime after that, as you're required to by, by law, within 60 days. That's everything that I have. I'm happy to answer questions if there's anything else you'd like to add, you'd add to the list in the future.
Thank you, Bob. Counselor, anything for Mr. Streeter? Pretty, pretty amazing set of projects. Love to hear it. It's my business, of course, but the amount of work that was involved in retail. You and your staff are a bit, like a busy.
Yeah, so it'll be a busy 2021. I'd also like to point out development on the Slumberland property and the Schreier property will be significant. Those were not included in tax base growth in the forecast. So this is going to be above and beyond what was incorporated in the forecast. This is really good news. As well as Hudson. There's a multi-family building on Hudson that was also not included. So that's going to be extra tax base.
Thank you very much. I mean, Jenna, next is our city attorney, Jim.
Mr. May, as a council.
You better ask.
Nothing is specific to be quite, but happy to use it.
Thank you. Counselor, anything for Jim? Thank you very much. Next up would be time to city administrator, Chris Walker. Next up would be time to city administrator, Chris Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I just want to take a minute to thank the staff and the department and the council for the budget, that was a significant effort and undertaking this year. And I kind of came in the middle, so I pretty much had to redo everything, so thank you for everybody's patience. But we, we did make huge strides in, in consolidating the budget and making it more clear and responsive to the citizens. So I'm very pleased with the results. That was definitely a team effort, so I want to make sure I go on record and thank all of you and all of the staffs.
Anything else, Chris? Counselors, anything for Chris? Thank you very much. Now, we are at a point where we inserted new business, and the new business was addressing the potential for a refund of the liquor license fees. For the on sale providers. I don't have a copy of that actual.
So, Mr. Mayor, City Council, I do have a proposed resolution here, if you want to, but maybe I could explain what the situation is. There has been a request to add this late in the year, late on the agenda, but in order to give the businesses a refund, bars and restaurants. Refund for the liquor licenses that they paid in twenty twenty. The current proposal, which I will hand out, is a resolution to refund licenses for twenty twenty only, which really means eight months of license minus one month. Or nine months minus one month, I'm sorry, so eight months net, because you already refunded one. And it would only wait for businesses that already paid the licenses, not for new businesses. So the proposal for you is a refund of total of fifty eight thousand dollars for twenty two businesses, bars and restaurants to refund it during the pandemic. And due to their opening, closing, loss of business, et cetera, it would be a way for the city to assist those specific businesses. If the money is proposed, come from reserves. And if you are going to take this act, and it is proper to add on this agenda because it's twenty twenty budget, so I would just state that. There are other ways to do it, but it is much easier to account it wise if we do it in this calendar. So I think that way, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Chris. Counselors, anything for Chris? If you bring it back here, my one comment was appreciation of Kevin, you're the one that prompted this thing in a serious manner to become before us. So the idea is phenomenal. So irritated with the recent government's order to shut down bars and restaurants with very little notice, very little preparatory time. And kind of caught the retro. So this is just a small, small thing that we are able to do, which is to verify. So I appreciate the council's flexibility in allowing it to be added tonight for our consideration. So with that, any other comments?
Yeah, you know, when, when this was brought to my attention, I wasn't sure that this was the best way to go about it, although I certainly support the idea. But the more I think about it, the more I think we should go forward with this. And I'm also open, I'm sorry, and I'm also open to, as Colleen had mentioned, having conversations about trying to help other industries in some way, if we are able.
Well, I think we should.
Oh, yeah.
If we are doing it for one, we should look into, at least for the time they were closed, doing the same as we're trying to do for the bars and restaurants.
No, I agree.
So how are we going to do that for twenty twenty then? How would we get that done?
Councilmember Swiffer in council, that is going to be a little challenge to count it wise, it's can, it's that, it's not that it can't be done. Because what we will do is we'll have a reserve balance, which is our ongoing role and balance. And so anything you want to refund, we will have to take out of there. If you're talking about offsetting a revenue, we're going to have to go around the accounting a little bit, go around in a bad way, I mean. Just make sure everything's on right, all of the balances, but it can be done, it's just not as easy.
Let me just state your, it's a significant, state your request again.
I'm just requesting, because I don't want to go ahead, not against this at all, this is not against the bars and restaurants. I understand they need help, we need to get it. I'm just saying that we should extend that courtesy and help to other businesses that paid license fees. And were not allowed to be open during the COVID situation, so that's my only issue, is that we have not opened the door to help ours.
Could we add a short word exception in our meeting in twenty twenty?
No, but we can in January. We absolutely can in January, and I should gather that down for you.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
What other, what other industries do we charge permits for that when we shut down?
That's what we would need to find out.
Right, so.
Like the lawns.
Please don't do that. But are we licensing the businesses there, or are we even controlling that one there? That would.
We will have to do some research.
I think it's a great idea. And I like the fact that it's getting done this year, and it, and so that it goes out quicker, because they need help now. Yeah, it's a great idea.
Are any of these aware that this is coming?
Very good.
A question for Chris, how fast can we get these checks up?
Chelsea's on, Chelsea, when is the next time we cut checks?
Good question, that goes back to our earlier conversation about check runs and city council meetings and things of that nature, so we would probably.
We do a special one, no, Chelsea, if they approve this at this meeting, we could do a special run.
Right, yeah. And everything, any check we ever cut is subject to council approval. So yes, if, if council is directing us to take this action and then also release those checks prior, you would still have final. Or even, it would all still run through the claims, but yes, we can certainly release those earlier.
We, we could do it next week. We could do it next week.
We could potentially do, we could do it as quickly as we can, hopefully this week, but for sure, we could do it next week, yes.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, thank you. So let's have a motion.
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt resolution twenty twenty, rebating months of the licensing fee to the city. Language since the license period covers. Quarter one.
You want to say calendar year twenty twenty eight or under year twenty twenty?
Rebating months of the licensing fee to the city.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any conversation? I've got one piece, and I don't think we talked about the amount. So for the public record, we could get listed, the public record, right now, we're competing just rebates to go over twenty two bars and restaurants. Only unserved with the licensing, only fifty eight thousand, four hundred and sixty six dollars and fifty six cents. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. Thank you. Next up is council presentations. We'll sit down in the right.
This might be a little different from what we're talking to, I just wanted to say, as I was watching, today is my daughter Peyton's birthday, and you know. Fortunately, she understands that her dad's on the city council, and the work we do is important, but I just wanted to say to Peyton, happy birthday, I love you. And just remember, you're my number one lady, and you always will be.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Love you. Thank you for that, man.
Anything else, else? Colleen?
Does landfill water come through, get supplied by Oakdale? Landfill, oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Is landfill water provided by Oakdale?
Yes.
Is Brian, I don't believe so.
Is Brian on still?
Brian?
Looks like he's still there.
Brian?
Maybe while we're waiting for Brian to catch up, keep going on the context around the question.
The reason. A person was complaining about the water on social.
Taste of the water.
Yeah, yeah, the taste of the water, that it tasted like nail polish, which I don't know how they would know something would taste like nail polish. But, but anyway, so I was just wondering if we supply the water there.
I don't believe so.
I don't believe so either.
But Chris, in Ryan's absence, short term absence right here, would you ask him to follow up with us?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, I'm sorry, yeah, thanks a lot.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Suzie? I've got a question, and the question is, can the budget presentation that Chelsea Peterson gave be accessible on our website?
Yeah.
And then. So next up is our claims, and in front of us, you were able to review the claim roster from November eighteen, twenty twenty through December four, twenty twenty. It's totaled five hundred and seventy thousand and ninety seven dollars and thirty four cents. Upon review, did you see any questions, or did you have, did you have any questions about any of the charges? Could I have a motion then, please? Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion on the second, is there any official conversation? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes as presented. Let me do two things here, first, since this is our first Zoom meeting, and if people maybe have been trying to eat in or make a comment. It's a little bit unorthodox for us to take a opportunity for people to say anything at the end of the meeting. But please bear with me here, and I'm just going to kick it over to you, unless there's anybody that is trying to get in, try to make a comment. But they'll take time to listen. Okay, thank you. So then, on behalf, since we're not going to meet again prior to Christmas, you are going to have a final meeting before the end of the year. We say thirtieth?
Twenty eighth.
Twenty ninth?
Twenty ninth.
But on behalf of the city council and the city staff, we wish you all a very merry Christmas and a happy and safe new year. So thank you, everybody. We have a motion to adjourn, please. There's a motion, is there a second? There's a motion in the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is adjourned, thank you, and good night.
Yeah. You think we're good?
You know, Chris, I have an idea, I could just film these ahead of time.
Yeah, right.
Play the video.
That'd be a lot easier, Bob. Thank you. Okay, I think you're good.
You ready to roll? So thank you, everybody, for, thank you, everybody, for coming to the Oakdale, or we're going to open.
Just take a pause.
So we are now going to be opening the Oakdale Economic Development Authority Meeting, December eighth, twenty twenty. Sue, would you do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Inka-Broson?
Here.
Commissioner Olson?
Here.
Commissioner Swiffer?
Here.
Commissioner Zabel?
Here.
President Reiki?
Here. First up, first item up on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting, which was November tenth, twenty twenty. Upon review, did you see anything that you wanted to clarify? Have a motion then, please.
I'm moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion in the second, is there any conversation? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the minutes are approved as presented. Then the only item that we have up on our agenda for discussion is a consent or a motion dealing with the resolution and the EDA. Bob, good evening.
Mr. President and commissioners, what you have before you this evening is a resolution for a program that the city has participated in for three years. It's a program where the city partners with the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency, they sell bonds, they take part of the bond proceeds. And they pledge them just for folks who want to purchase homes in Oakdale. And it provides a little better interest rate, if you can believe it. But it also, there's some modification to the underwriting criteria, as well as access to down payment assistance. And we started to do this three years ago because Washington County had it, and nothing was happening in Oakdale. And since it came to Oakdale, and we've been marketing it, we really don't have to do much more than that. We've had a lot, a lot of activity in this program for the last three years. What I think is important to note is, is the part of the neighborhood framework that had housing investment and amenity, disamenity, and building social capital. This was one component of the housing investment program, it was a way for folks who want to move to Oakdale, who are just buying their first home, to come and move to Oakdale and start a family. And it's really, really been successful, and it doesn't cost the city anything, we do, we do marketing consistently, but it's been. There's been a lot of interest in the program in three years, and we think it's worked well. So we're just asking that the EDA pass the resolution, and we'll keep going with it.
Great, thank you, Bob. In front of us and in our packet, we had the resolution, but we also had the agreement, the commitment agreement. Did any counselor have any questions about the agreements or the documents or Bob? Thank you, Bob.
Yeah.
Could I have a motion then, please?
I'll make a motion to approve consensus, motion A is presented.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion in the second, is there any conversation? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then that motion passes as presented, thank you. Could I have a motion to adjourn, please?
I'm moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes, this meeting is adjourned, thank you, and good night.